I'd like to bring the order and welcome everyone for this evening's meeting, February 16th, between the county commissioners and the Alexander County Fire Departments and their boards. Hopefully, all fire departments are represented here tonight along with their boards. We'd like to ask Ronnie, Board Member Ronnie Reese for the invocation and Board Member Kent Herman for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today and we just pray you should give us a good, clear minds and give us wisdom as we make decisions here. For that, thank you for each person that came out. Thank you for the safety you give to us to arrive. Pray you protect us as we go to our homes, our places of abode, and be with us when we make decisions tonight that we would be able to move Alexander County forward. And we thank you for all that you do and the protection you give our county each day. In Christ's name, pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the one and only, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple items real quick is appreciate the meeting. We always need to come together and discuss things and try to move Alexander County forward in a lot of different avenues, especially when it comes to safety of our citizens. And tonight, of course, we're here on the mainly fire departments and issues that you might have along with a training facility and anything else you want to discuss. This meeting is very informal, meaning, you know, recognize at any time and we'll have you come up. But anyone that speaks, we do want to put you at the podium on the microphone so we can all hear. Plus, this is being publicly broadcasted, so we want the folks of Alexander County to hear also to see, you know, because they are a citizen, they need to know what's going on in the county. Let's see. Yeah, there's a roster floating around, I think currently. Before you leave, please make sure you sign that. And if you didn't put on there who you represent or something, it'll be okay. But if you hadn't signed it yet, please do so. Does everyone out here, do we have all fire departments represented here tonight? Look around, we good? All right, cool. All right, so who'd like to start though? Well, does any commissioner have anything that they want to say or recognize prior to letting the chiefs or anyone else have the podium?
Marty, I'd just say, I guess I'm the one that kind of brought this up the other night. I just think we need to know a little more and make sure we're all on the same page. And I'm concerned about where we're at, but we got to be able to pay the bills too for the rest of the county. And but I want to make sure all the firemen and their boards and we're all on the same page as we go forward. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner? All right, who wants to start us off? Come on up. And when you come up to the podium, please state your name and position, please.
I'm Scotty Abernathy, Chief with Stony Point Fire Department. And thank you all for letting us come here tonight. I want you to know first and foremost, Stony Point Fire Department supports a training ground, we support it 100% with college involvement. Because without college involvement, you know, the county's gonna, I feel like, and I hadn't heard, but I feel like that, you know, the college is willing to spend some money. And if you don't let the college be involved in this training ground, the county's gonna have to accept the blunt, the whole hit of the money, whatever it is.
Let me ask one thing. Is there a representative from CVCC here tonight?
I'm Rusty Graham of the department here for fire.
All right, thank you.
Without, I mean, you can train, have in-house training and stuff like that, but without college involvement, without, without the college being involved or without having, going through, I forget what the word is I'm looking for, without the college involvement, you cannot have a certified class in your department. And Stony Point Fire Department, I can't speak for nobody else, but I'm gonna speak for Stony Point, we are gonna teach certified classes at Stony Point, whether it be firefighter classes, whether it be TR, VMR, or AG, or anything, that's what we're gonna teach. And we do have in-house training and stuff like that. And you can teach, you can have an instructor there and he can teach you all, all you need to know, he can teach you the whole firefighter one and two curriculum. But if you ain't got that college behind you, you're not gonna be certified at the end. There ain't gonna be no certification for you. You might still be the best firefighter in the world, but still, you won't have that certification. And without the college, who's gonna build the props? I mean, who's gonna build all these props that you have since OSFM and everybody requires 100% of practicals to be done? Only so, you know, with these classes, it might be 10 practicals that an instructor has to do with every student. And if it's 20 students, I mean, you can do the math on them, you're still gonna have the practical, the, the stuff, the props and stuff to do all this with. And the paperwork, who's gonna track the paperwork if the college is not involved? I mean, somebody, the college is always track the paperwork. When they're, when they're involved, they track it. They keep up with it. And, you know, they can be, it could be a 50/50 or whatever between the college and the county. I mean, a 50/50 deal, you know, y'all supply something, they supply something, you know, and it could be a 50/50 deal on, somebody's gotta take care of the grounds, the props, the classes. And we, and they do have, you know, the college, I think, does have insurance when somebody does get hurt. If somebody gets hurt, or in the event that there'd be a LODD, who's gonna accept responsibility for this? Is the county, is the, you know, the man that's out there that's teaching, who's gonna pay him? I mean, if it's a, I think the firefighter one and two, well, I call it firefighter one and two because I'm older, the new standard, I think, is between 430 and 500 hours, if you take the whole thing. And for an instructor, you know, an older instructor, it's got a lot of certifications, been there a while, you know, he's probably a $30 an hour, an hour man to teach all that stuff. Stony Point Fire Department can't afford to pay that. And we just, we ain't never had no trouble, CVCC. We wasn't at C, I ain't been at CVCC as long as the rest of these fellers have. I was, I left in the early 90s, which was, I was a young, a young man then. But we come back in, I don't know, 2012, 2011, '10. And, you know, we ain't had no trouble, we ain't had no trouble at all. But they keep up with everything, I have no trouble having classes, I call them, I tell them what I want. And I can usually pick my instructors, I don't have no trouble finding instructors to teach, and we sit it up and we take the class. But I just feel like that the, the college should be involved in the training ground 100%. I think it's, I think we'll be setting ourselves up for failure if the college is not involved. Thank you.
Eugene Ert, Alexander Rescue. I'm here on behalf of Terry Fox, he couldn't be here tonight. I'm the sergeant and the training officer. Same as what Chief Abernathy said, we'd like to see college involvement. And we also would like to see, we think it probably should be county-owned property. Something that we own, not, it'll always be ours, it'll always be the county's for us all to use. As far as the squad goes, ISO-wise, we're not, doesn't affect us. But we are for the training facility and we go, because we're gonna, we're gonna be a part of it too, we're gonna be able to use it. So, but as far as the squad goes, that is where we stand.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. My name's David White, I'm the chief up at Ellendale. I just want to piggyback on what Chief Abernathy and Ert said. I believe we need the CVCC in anything we do. And my bylaws at the fire department require that we have 18 hours each year of certification through our community college. So, I don't, I don't know, seem like that's the way we've took off here. I don't know whether we're off on the right start or not, you know, but I just want to say that whatever's done, I know we're gonna talk about training grounds and where we go with that, I think we need CVCC with us 100%. Thank you.
My name's Ashley Sarnes, I'm the chief of Bethlehem Fire and Rescue. Just to let you all know, Bethlehem supports this training ground 110%, whether we build it here, Bethlehem, Stony Point, wherever we do it. I'd like to see the college involved, but I think if we build it anywhere else, you can still run CVC classes there. So, it's not like they're gonna, you know, not touch the property once it's done. I understand they have some stipulations of when they help and when they don't help. But, you know, to me, unless CVCC's putting money on the table up front, this training ground's been talked about for, I know, 30 years because I've been in the fire service for 30 years, I'd just like to see something done. The one major thing that we look at is training at Bethlehem. That is the one most big, biggest single point value that we can get on our ISO. That's up to us. Nothing y'all do, nothing anybody else in the county does affects that but us. So, if you build it, we're gonna come, wherever it's at. You know, if you need to split it up in a county, or if CVCC don't want to build it at the fairgrounds, hey, I got four acres in Bethlehem, come up there and build. You know, we'll, we'll make it happen. But I just think that wherever you put it, I'd like to see the county do something. I'm also, you know, I'm up for free money, I'm not gonna lie to you there either. If we can get money from somewhere else, save ourselves and the county money, I'm good with that. But like I said, you build it and we're gonna come on it, because that's the biggest thing we can do. And if y'all are gonna supply the training center in a, in a three-story building and we can get max points, Bethlehem's gonna strive their best to get max points, no matter who does it.
Not to put the representative from CVCC on the spot, but are you prepared to talk or give any advice or any opinion at all on any of the mentioned items?
Others, I'll get up to the mic before. My name is Rusty Graham. I am the department head for emergency management, public safety, and the fire protection program. Under my program, we have the fire and rescue classes that everyone's talking about. In my position here, I have to be very clear, I do not have the authority to tell you what CVC's gonna put in.
Sure.
If the, if the board would like to call for our senior administration, they are the ones that can financially bind us, and they reminded me that today. We want to do something positive up here. That's one of the reasons I was hired, okay? And we do have some other ways to help max out the credit. As most of our chiefs know here, we have a brand-new program. Now, can I hand this to y'all, let y'all actually see it?
Thanks, sir.
We have the new CVCC ISO 9 program, which maximizes credit for the time being. We're offering training in various formats to help the local volunteer firefighter. We have online options to help, because it is hard to get the max amount of credit. We do divided into company training, driver training, facility training, hazmat training, and officer training. One of the key parts will be needing a facility. I'm the first one to admit it. There needs to be a training facility here in this county. I cannot guarantee you a dime. My position, believe it or not, in the college as the department head, I don't have control of the purse strings. What we can do for the time being is allow them to use the one that Hickory is providing and assisting us with at the main campus. That's, that's all I have today for you.
Okay.
That's the only physical facility I have. We do offer classes here, when the chiefs call, we offer them. Ellendale right now is running the firefighter series. But if you have any questions, feel free to ask. One of the biggest things I'm gonna tell you is please contact our senior leadership and invite them to these meetings, and they'd be more than happy to come talk. And I'm sure that once that's done, that there can be an actual financial conversation. I just can't do it.
Sure.
And as far as if you decide to, to take it to another facility, my recommendation, with almost 16 years of being in a training facility, make sure that you have adequate bathrooms, adequate lighting, and everything you need. In my personal opinion, putting it here at this facility, in this area, would be far better. We already have the water we need, and you already own the property. Do you have any other questions for me?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Scott Mitchell, chief of Hidden Heart Fire Department. Like the past speakers, we 100% support a training facility of some sort here in the county. And as Chief from Bethlehem mentioned, with or without the support of the college. The presentation that the fire marshal presented you with at the last meeting, he broke it down, and if his funding was correct there, it looks like, as far as getting started with the basic three-story building and what he had laid out there, it looked like the funding could be made available fairly easily for that part. I understand the college's stance on not doing anything on property that the county don't own. And as the gentleman CVCC just mentioned, right here on this property where you're at, just this side of the road, this section out here at the end of the building, whichever in this way, I think substantially meets the area-wise requirements, because I think it's a minimum of two acres, I believe, that OSFM requires, and this piece of that. And I understand that some of you had concerns with burning inside town and stuff and what that might look like. But most burn facilities, when you're doing training like that, it's, the smoke that is put off from that is very minimal. And what you're actually burning when you're doing that is pallets and straw generally. There's no, it's nothing more than like you'd be burning leaves out in a yard anyway. So, the, the amount of smoke there is minimum. So, again, we support the training facility, no matter what you do, how you choose to do it, with or without the college. But we do believe that right here would be a good location, since the county does own the property. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got just one thing to ask.
Yes, sir.
If somebody could answer it. I know just right across the road, we have a LZ, a landing zone, that's been designated for helicopters. You talked about the fire, what about water? How much water do you typically use, you know, in a training session? You know, it would be coming all the way down the street, you know? So, that's my only thing. I've said it before, we get a lot of calls as commissioners, and, you know, I can imagine in town, if you got something smoking, there would be, you know, some issues. Maybe not. I've never witnessed one of the, the burn towers, burn houses, but, you know.
Can I answer that one?
Yes, boy.
I have 16 years of experience at a burn, at one of the largest burn facilities in the state. The smoke that you've seen, how many of you've ever driven down Dallas, in Dallas, North Carolina, and you've seen the big black plume coming from Gaston College? Sometimes people confuse that with what the actual burn building's doing. That's actually when they're burning diesel pits for Duke Energy's training. That's where all that black smoke's coming from. You're gonna have minimal smoke, and realistically, with volunteer firefighters, they're gonna be here after it's dark. No one's gonna, as far as your water supply, you're looking at a small burn area, you're talking 200 to 300 gallons per run. And it actually does not, it does not end up as much water as you think it does. And usually, with every facility I've ever seen, there's not been that much runoff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jamie, you want this signed, Chief?
Yeah.
I'm Matt Jordan, I'm fire chief at Taylorville Fire Department. Thank you for holding this meeting tonight. I'm, I'm excited, tickled to death that we're this close to a training ground or a training facility in the county. I started in the fire service 30 years ago, and a training ground was talked about then. The property out there on Carson Chapel Road that the town of Taylorville owns was talked about as a site for a training ground when I started. But I think the feasibility of that, with the old dumping ground out there, did not come through, so they decided to not talk about it no more, and we let it go. And, you know, we've, we brought it up time and time again, talked about several different things, and we just never got this close. So, I'm tickled that we're at least this close. I'd like to see it. I agree with some of the other fire chiefs that spoke earlier. I think CVCC needs to be involved. I don't know, somebody's gonna have to maintain it, somebody's gonna have to make sure everything's coordinated with it. And I don't know, I would like to see if, if it's a, if CVCC and the county do a partnership, I'd like to see at least somebody, one person, you know, being in control. I don't wanna have to jump through hoops to use this training facility. You know, if you're gonna build it for training grounds, then let the emergency services use it for a training ground. If I need to use it on a Thursday night, I shouldn't have to be able to call four or five different people and try to schedule something, and then I can't get it. So, I think it needs to be fairly easy access to where we can go whenever we need to and train. So, but we'll support it. Taylorville Fire Department will support it. We try to train, you know, at least two or three times a month, and we hold classes, we do hold classes through CVCC. So, I'm, I'm tickled that you're this close, and I hope you push, push it on through if you can. If we can help in any way, we'd be glad to, glad to support and help it. Thank you.
My name's Cody Fox, I'm chief of Vash Town Fire Department. As far as training grounds goes, we definitely support anything we can get. We'd love to have it, we'd love to have the ISO points we gain from it. And if, I don't see CVCC not holding classes or allowing us to hold classes, no matter where it's at. So, I speak for my department on that, I believe we'd just like to have one. We need it to train and to do, no matter where it's at. Like Matt said, I would like to be able to use it when we need to, without having to jump through a lot of hoops. But I don't really feel like the county's trying to make it hard for us to do, and I appreciate your consideration to help us with it. But we definitely support it, and would be glad to have it, and we'd use it if we did have it. Thank you.
This might be a loaded question. I've heard a couple say that, you know, this has been talked about for 30 years, which is way past my time on the board of commissioners. So, what do you think the reasons are that nothing's ever happened, just out of curiosity? Anybody want to take a stab or know any information on that?
Probably funded for one thing, you know? And maybe not, you know, having meetings like this, where we come together and try to solve, what we need to solve, if we get there. I'm, I'm glad we have those meetings where we talk to y'all, y'all talk to us, ask each question.
My name's Whitney Daniels, Assistant Chief Whittenburg Fire Department. Just like the rest of the fire chiefs, Whittenburg would like to have a training facility, wherever you put it, preferably on our end of town. It just makes it easier. But, but we wholeheartedly go with CVCC too, to help us come back to materials and the funding and stuff like that.
Does any of the board members want to speak tonight, from any of the fire departments, on anything at all? I figured you might have something to say, Charlie. Yeah, come on down.
I'd like to throw my, I'm Charlie Marshall, Assistant Chief, Taylorsville, and Board President, but I remember when me and Larry used to be out stomping around, trying to get people to sign a petition to get a fire tax. And that's, that's kind of what I wanted to maybe speak to y'all a little bit about tonight. I know anytime it comes to money, that, you know, we're a small county, small town. And me and Matt went up yesterday and spoke with the town board, and they want to really get together with maybe a couple of commissioners and talk about funding. I've got some figures here, which I think will be a little bit interesting. We looked up what some rural and some city departments. For one, it's a little hard to compare Taylorsville with Newton, but when you compare, Newton Fire Department has an annual budget of $4,745,000, and ours runs about 320. We get about $78,000 from the town. It's a little hard to see, you know, the difference, other than, you know, paid firefighters. And when I talked to them yesterday, one of, one of the, one of the big issues that the town wanted to address, and their thing was that they were concerned that, given the amount of calls we ran last year, 1,033, that maybe we could be like some of the other departments and get some extra help from the county. We have got some figures and talked to the town about maybe possibly going 24 hours a day, having a person at night. And I can tell you, from having been a fire chief... having a person at night, and I can tell you from having been a fire chief and all these other fire chiefs around here, when you're laying there in bed at night and the tones go off, first thing you, you start listening for is to hear that truck en route. And, and if we can have somebody at the station, get a truck en route, just like all these other departments, those couple minutes can really make a difference. I know that since the county started, uh, funding the two firefighters at Hidnot and the two at Ellendale, it, it's made a lot of difference, especially, we did, we were just funding one, and then whenever we got our extra money this year, why, uh, we've got two positions during the day, and also now, we, we've been funding for several years, we fund a night person Monday through Friday from, uh, five to eleven, but if we could go twenty-four hours, it, it would really make a difference. Plus, I know, speaking not just from Central Alexander or Taylorsville, but, uh, but from being a firefighter myself, uh, you know, if, uh, you're a firefighter, and a lot of young fighter, firefighters come in, if we've got the money to provide them with the equipment, I know now we have people come to Taylorsville, want to join up, well, you know, gear. A set of gear now, a set of turnout gear has gone up to fifty-five hundred dollars for one set of turnout gear. Last year, we put in for ten sets through the state, and as y'all probably know, we get enough money, as the old saying goes, we're too rich to be poor and too poor to be rich. We usually get passed over anymore by the state. Well, that's, uh, when you say ten sets of gear, that's fifty-five thousand dollars. Whenever you talk about insurance, that's twenty-five thousand dollars before you can even pull out of the station. Our newest truck at Taylorsville is a two thousand and eleven Pierce engine. That same, that truck cost us about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in two thousand and eleven. That same truck be over seven hundred thousand dollars now. Plus, you have a two-year waiting period or longer to even get a truck. And I know that, uh, you know, money's tight, but with the county growing, and, and I can see this explosive growth, because there's hardly a week goes by, I don't get a letter or two at the house, people from all parts of the country wanting to buy land around here. Well, they're wanting to buy it for some reason. This place is gonna take off, because Channel Nine News had on a while back that Hickory was in the top twenty fastest-growing percentage-wise areas in the state. Alexander County's located halfway between Charlotte and Boone. Everything's coming this way. Well, if we work now and put a little money in these departments and stuff like that to get equipment, we'll be ready. I told the town board yesterday, one thing we run into, we've got a junior firefighter program. The schools have a firefighter program, got a lot of promising young firefighters. But what happens, the way ours are, when they go to school to be a firefighter, they've not even finished their class till already paid fire departments are after them, ready to sign a deal, bring them to work, which that's great. We've got a lot of great firefighters that live here in the county that work somewhere else. But if we had some positions here in the county, when they're in the other towns and counties working, they're not here. Now, eve- even with the paid fire, firefighters in the county, if you have a large fire anywhere in the county, you're looking at maybe even all call, every department in the county during the day, or at least I'm glad to see now that they are doing three department dispatch on any structure fire. But whenever three departments roll, that's all those trucks, and, uh, you're looking at, I think last, the Fire Marshal's Office done a study on us, and I think we were, by the number of calls, we were one of the lowest per call cost, and ours was well over two hundred dollars. And, uh, if, hopefully y'all will take that into consideration, doing the budget, I know, you know, and hopefully maybe, I can personally say I appreciate y'all sitting down, talking with us. If we can get together and work out a plan, a long-term plan, because I think that's what we really need, I mean, you know, when I read this stuff about, uh, departments getting well over a million dollars to operate, you know, that's great. I remember nearly fifty years ago, when I was a young firefighter and come on Taylorsville Fire Department in nineteen seventy-three, I went out of town to some schools over around Hickory, and I walked in them stations and I seen them trucks, and I said, wow. Today, I can go to a nice fire department and walk in there and see all that nice stuff, and I say, wow. You know, we just hadn't, you know, we went, we went a long ways, but we've got a long way to go, and that's pretty much what I got to say, I appreciate your time, and appreciate your service.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say just a little something to the funding, and you know, uh, in the fire departments, man, I'm glad to have fire departments, appreciate everything that y'all do for the county and do for the citizens, and, you know, we're to manage the citizens' taxpayers' money to do the best job that we can. And a lot of times, you know, we ride defense and picking up splinters, don't matter really what you do, you know, it's hard to satisfy everybody, but, uh, I think you can tell, hopefully you can, we have y'all on our mind, because, you know, we've been meeting, we've been communicating and talking, and, you know, that's what we wanna do. I've got this piece of paper, and I think this is public record, isn't it, Jamie? It's the funding, uh, by the county to the fire departments. Starts year, just goes back to two thousand and eighteen. Bethlehem in two thousand and eighteen received total payments of two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and some dollars. In twenty-three, Bethlehem received four hundred and twenty-two thousand, uh, three hundred and some dollars. Whittenburg in two thousand and eighteen, one seventy, this year, two seventy-nine. Hidnot, one thirty-three in two thousand and eighteen, three hundred and eighteen thousand in twenty-three. East Alexander, which is Stony Point, two thousand and eighteen, it was one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five. Twenty-twenty-three, two hundred and, looks like I got that thing on my, two hundred, two thousand maybe, one hundred and thirty. Ellendale in two thousand and eighteen, one hundred and ten thousand. In twenty-twenty-three, two hundred and seventy-one thousand. Sugarloaf, two thousand and eighteen, one hundred and, one hundred thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And twenty-three, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-one. Central Fire, two thousand and eighteen, one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty-five. Twenty-twenty-three, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four. And last but not least, Vash Thai. Two thousand and eighteen, sixty-three thousand. Two thousand and twenty-three, one hundred and forty-one thousand. And, you know, we're funding at a higher level, and, you know, we're not gonna take funding away. We're hoping to still, you know, keep growing, but, you know, we can't do it all at one time, but we wanna do the best we can to get to that next level, just as, uh, Mr. Marshall was talking. You know, seeing trucks and seeing what other places have and what's going on, and, you know, maybe one day we'll be able to, to be there, but we gotta work together, all of us, you know, working at a time. And, uh, I'll just say for my part, that's why we were looking at the fire grounds, and that's why we leased it, was for the sole purpose of a training facility, to be there, not in town, but close enough to town and to the center, you know, kind of the, of the area. And, uh, you know, Rick French, which, you know, I miss him every day, especially when we have a meeting, but we talked about it, discussed it a whole lot, and, uh, you know, that was kinda the plan we come up with and that we had. But, uh, we wanna make it, you know, if people's gonna use it, fine, but if nobody's gonna use it, you know, we don't wanna, you know, do something that's not right, so that's why we had this meeting here tonight, so everybody can talk and, uh, you know, get the opinions in the open, and then we can make a, hopefully a good decision, you know, from there, so. But, you know, I hope everybody sees that we do have increasing, you know, on our mind for fire departments, and we wanna fund them. If we don't have fire departments, I know all about the insurance, my insurance is gonna go up, your insurance is gonna go up, everybody's is. And it's based on the response time, how good they are, what the rating is, and, uh, you know, we've got some fantastic fire departments, in my opinion, all over the county. You know, everyone does a good job where they're at, so, uh, you know, that's pretty much all I got to say.
Mr. Chairman, I've talked to some people in the state this week, uh, from what I've gathered, all of our fire departments are in, in real good shape as far as ISO ratings. Probably the biggest thing that I've been told would help them was, uh, if they had a, another station somewhere, uh, in northern part of the county. We, we've got so much distance between some of these fire departments, and that would be something that would help get the rating, uh, greater than, than even the training, uh, was what I was told this week. But, uh, I appreciate what all of you do, and, uh, like Ronnie said, we just gotta be thrifty with our funds, 'cause we, we, we don't have the money available that the big counties do. And I am concerned. But, but our response time to these fires and make sure that they're, uh, we do have somebody there, I know it's necessary, and, uh, if not, like Ronnie said, we're, we're gonna be in trouble with our insurance coverage. So, uh, but I just wanted to make sure that we get, all get on the same page with the schooling, and who's gonna look after it. 'Cause the last thing I wanna do, 'cause I've had some taxpayers that's already called me, is you spend all this money, and, and then is the fireman gonna use it? Are we just gonna spend that money, is it gonna sit there? Is it, is it gonna come back to us as taxpayers? And, uh, that's one reason, I, I was glad to see the, the, the citizens here, the chairman of the boards that's not really on as a firefighter here tonight, 'cause I know it gets back to the community and the concerns. So, uh, I just hope we can move forward, we've been able to, ever since I've been on here, we've had an open book, we've met with y'all, and I wanna continue doing the same thing. Thank y'all.
I'll say a few remarks. This is my second term as the county commissioner. I don't remember what year I came on, was it twenty eighteen maybe? I, I really don't know, but either way, if you add up those figures that Ronnie went over a moment ago, that's a million bucks, million dollars, no matter how you slice it, distributed between all of our fire departments, that has increased since twenty eighteen. You know, we, uh, we sat down with the fire chiefs on multiple occasions, listened, talked, discussed, tried to hash out. We agreed upon in substituting in some monies, um, until we got to the reevaluation, because we all knew that the reevaluation, if you paid any attention to the real estate market in the last several years, values were going up, I mean, there's no, there's no way they could not go up. And, um, you know, as county commissioners, we didn't order the evaluation, it has to be done every eight years due to legislation in North Carolina, even though some folks in the public think that we just did it because values were up. But we all agreed, and all fire chiefs at those meetings agreed, that the supplemental monies that we were going to distribute or inject into our fire departments was good, and all agreed upon that. But we're having an informal meeting, so I want you to know where I stand. And I'm just gonna tell you, just like we're sitting at that table, you know, across the road talking. I've heard disgruntles and things through the public that do reach me of, um, you know, money's not good enough. Well, we all sat at that table, and we agreed to get us through to the reevaluation. So, actually, it really concerns me that we had those discussions and then everybody was in agreement, but then we get out here to the public and amongst ourselves and start, you know, complaining about what we agreed upon, so I don't understand that for one. But either way, this board has stood behind our fire departments since the day I've been on it. Now, I cannot speak for any board prior to me being here. But we opened up communication lines when we learned that there was an issue. We came to y'all. So just think for a moment how it feels to be on the other side of the stick, and you got people out here in the public. A lot of folks come to me just because I know a lot of folks here, you know? And they know that if they talk to me, they can trust me, because I'm not gonna ever mention their name. But, you know, it really, it really just perturbs me, and I hate to say it that way, but we're in an informal meeting, and, you know, we're a small county, we're gonna have to figure this out, we're gonna have to come together, just like y'all said, a long-term plan, yes, definitely. It's not a quick fix. So when the complaining that I get every other week or so, another person calls me about this or that, and, uh, you know, posturing, things like that, that's, that's not, that's not creating a good environment for us to, for me, I'm gonna say me, not the rest of the board, in this. Is fire departments important? By far. My number one concern with fire departments, it's our citizens, it's the safety of our citizens, bottom line. Because if, you know, my house catches on fire, man, I want somebody showing up to help, you know, it's that simple, just like a wreck or anything else. And just, I know how Charlie, you know, was talking about going into places when he was younger, or even now, in other, you know, communities, counties or whatnot, and a lot of them do have the, the frills. I see that and stuff that I do too. Um, you know, I've had, I, I go in them and I say, wow, you know, even looking at a courthouse, wow. Wow, you know, this is Taj Mahal stuff here compared to what we could afford probably. But yeah, do, does this board wanna help? I can speak for, for them on this, yeah, and we're showing that we want to help, and we're having these open conversations. But, you know, spreading stuff, if someone's out there spreading stuff in the community, need to stop, you know? Right here's where this needs to happen. Or pick up the phone, come front porch at the house. I'm good to do that stuff. And we'll, and we'll figure out how to get to, uh, a happy point, a good point for, for firefighters in the county. But as far as financially, the reevaluation, you know, our, I think our budget year runs to what, June or July of twenty twenty-three? June thirty? And then the reval start, starts kicking in at that point. You know, you could sit down and just tentatively think of how much more money would be coming into your fire departments at your current fire tax rate versus what, you know, hypothetically, 'cause I, I'm not gonna say numbers, 'cause I couldn't guarantee numbers until appeals and all that. cause I, I'm not gonna say numbers, cause I couldn't guarantee numbers until appeals and all that's over with as far as evaluations for each community. But it's a substantial amount for each department. Some are more than others, of course, just simply because of density and valuation and those type of properties. But, you know, we appreciate you guys a lot. And I know that we're getting into different generations, I know I'm talking a lot, guys, sorry. But we're getting into different generations and, uh, almost like a, a social type society, in my opinion. So, it's a, you know, nobody wants to do the work anymore, they just wanna sit around and let somebody else do the work. And that's not the way I grew up and I'm pretty confident that y'all, y'all are not those type folks. I'm not saying that at all, but the selection that you have coming up, I would say that it's probably harder and harder to find volunteer firemen or in any business, people that wanna be work and diligent in what they do. In my opinion, as far as the, the college goes, you know, I don't know the best answer for that. That's why I'm wanting to hear you guys talk and hear each one of your opinions out of each fire department. But like my question a while ago, you know, why, why is a facility not happening thirty, thirty-plus years? I, that blows my mind. We're not for kicking a bucket down the road, I like to get stuff done. If it's definitely a necessity, then, you know, we wanna do it, but we don't wanna mess up as a board and spend our taxpayers' money, put it at the wrong place, the wrong type, you know, and then have issues and other things with our firemen and fire chiefs and boards and stuff of that nature. But the way government operates and different entities operate have changed greatly over the past five years. And the cool thing about being a small county is we can come together like this, cause I don't figure, you know, the, the bigger ones do things of this nature. I'd be surprised if they do, but they may. But we're in this together, that's why I'm telling you, we're in this together. And we've got to figure out how to make it work, but we've got to have each other's backs all the way through this to make this work.
Guys, the only thing I will say too is I appreciate your job you've done. I served on the fire department with several of the guys from Taylorville. And it's not an easy job, especially if you get woke up two or three o'clock in the morning, you have to get to work next morning at seven o'clock. We did all the training that we could do with the revenue that we had at that time. And some of the training I enjoyed, I honestly tell you, a couple of them I didn't even like whatsoever. I never did like going down through that tunnel, today or tomorrow, but I went because it's part of the training. And I'm proud of the job that you do. My main purpose of being here tonight is, was because I just wanted to get information on how y'all felt about the relationship between the fire departments and CVCC. And I also wanted to see if that relationship is something that you'd wanna see continued, because I'd heard it both ways. Some say that you didn't want anything to do with CVCC, some say that you did. And when we were doing our training, Charlie, I would tell you about how old I am, okay? All right, but I'm about eighteen now. But fifty years ago, or whenever, seventy-three is when I came on the fire department. We came on together. And, uh, uh, it ventured out and we did our training through CVCC, which I think there's, the community college is a vital asset to rural communities. It gives people an opportunity to get an education that they need in the type of job that they're wanting to do or some adventure they're wanting to go into. So I'm, I, I, I was glad to hear what everybody had to say about that. I think the, the training facility is needed, always have. And to answer a lot of people's questions about why it wasn't done before, cause this county's never had the revenue to do a whole lot. I mean, we've struggled over the years to try to do things that need to be done. When I first came on this board, I can tell you now, we, it, it took us almost three or four years before we could do anything because we had to get a revenue raised up because the LGC said that we couldn't borrow any money or do anything. And it's a tough road to hoe whenever you're the chairman of the board and you get that letter from the local government council telling you can't borrow any money, you can't do anything because you don't have the fun balance to do it. And that happens because they govern what counties can do and what they can borrow and, and the revenue that they have on hand to be able to pay their bills down the road. But I'm glad all of you want the fire academy, I see the unity with that. And I think that this board, board will make a decision that will come out here shortly and we'll, we'll talk about it and see what happens in the new budget. But I will tell you this, I know that if anything does happen and what we decide to do, I'm firmly convinced it'll be in the new budget, what happens, cause that's July one. And this is, this is February now, so it's March, April, May, June, four months. And I think you'll get your answer to what's gonna happen to the budget happening in July of twenty twenty-three. But I do appreciate y'all's consideration for your fire department and the community, appreciate you being here.
Mr. Chairman, only one I will say is just one more thing, kind of what Larry's talked about. You know, sometimes we're strapped for funding. And sometimes with, you know, some good management and things going on and some money coming in, our sales taxes stayed up fortunately in Alexander County. I know during the pandemic, I think everybody did. I remember getting an email from Catawba County and it said, boy, we're, we're gonna be hurting. The people from Alexander are not coming over to work, they're not coming to buy gas, they're not coming to eat, not coming for dinner. And sure enough, the, I think it was the next month, they were down forty percent, but we were up forty percent. So, you know, when we get people supporting the county, buying what you can here and, you know, getting your necessities in the county, that helps to put money in, I'll say, you know, everybody's pocketbook or into the county's pocketbook, so we have something to, to go on to divvy it out. But speaking for myself and I think for the other board, we have no idea of putting any undue burden on any fire department for this training facility. You know, we're looking at total funding for it. You know, unless there is a venture where CVCC will come in and, you know, and help out. But, you know, I still say for myself, regardless, we're looking at, you know, doing that facility. We just want to make sure that we get it so that y'all will be willing to use it. And I've heard, I've heard that from pretty much every department. So, you know, we'll try to come up with a good decision and let everybody know, so. But I appreciate the turnout tonight too, people coming out, speaking and telling, you know, what's on your mind. Appreciate that.
Marty, one other thing that hadn't come up here tonight is, you know, we have approached the state for the sales tax. And, you know, I think we'll, I think we get a good chance of getting that. So that will help all these departments as long as with, with the, all emergency management. So, so.
Yeah, in relation to that also can is, that takes time to get the, the sales tax and then reevaluation. It, it takes time. I hate, I like getting stuff done pretty quick and seems like in the government world, nothing goes quick.
Well, that's things going on now that we planned several years ago is just now happening.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the water tower, water lines are continuing to be expanded and, I mean, I, I mean.
We've done a lot of stuff.
Done a lot of stuff and maybe we've given y'all more money. Fire departments are very important. And also wherever the EMS guy is, where he's sitting, the, uh, our emergency services altogether in this county are very, very important. Trust me, I know, I've ridden in the ambulance three times, I appreciate them. And I appreciate the fire department's quick response on stuff. So, know that, know that, I can also say no from this guy sitting right here, I'm on your side.
Y'all good?
Anybody else out there, go ahead?
I have a question. So, I'm not exactly sure who all was on it, but there was a group not too long ago that was kinda like working on like a training ground or committee type thing, to put something together. And I think that CVCC may have been involved, just to have, put a plan together, maybe. But I'm not sure who all was on it, but. It was recently, probably six months ago.
Maybe the fire commission, but I don't know that at any time any county commissioner was contacted about being involved in that at that time.
No, I'm not talking about the commission, the fire commissioner. Maybe they were trying to put a plan together to bring to you.
Maybe they were, but I.
Of CVCC, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
We, we had to help navigate, help navigate that.
We, we had a committee, oh, I was on it, Ashley was on it, uh.
Terry Fox.
Terry Fox was on it, I think Ronnie, he come to make the one meeting. You know, we had one meeting, Scotty, Scotty was on it too. Yeah, Jeff Peel was on it, was originally, and then when he, when he passed away, I think Ronnie. You know, we, we had a meeting, had some discussion, but then I, the ball got dropped and we didn't meet, we didn't meet for over a year. Uh, I don't know if it was, uh, more buzz or, I don't know who kinda headed that up. It wasn't really, I guess it really was somebody headed it. And I don't know, I'm not saying like the county was on the ball, but, uh, we just didn't meet.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, to, to that point, we, you know, I remember we had a meeting, which was in the parking lot out here, kind of an informal meeting. And then we set up the fire commission, you know, for doing that. And I believe Marty and myself was at a meeting and we throwed out the fire grounds, I believe, isn't that right, Marty? And, you know, I'm thinking that, you know, pretty much every chief was there and everyone was good with that. But, you know, when we met originally, I said we needed two options, you know? Instead of having it strictly at one place, we needed an option for somewhere else, you know, so we could, you know, come up with something agreeable. So, but it just takes some time for everybody to come together. Yeah, as Chairman Pendle said, things sometimes move slow. But, you know, in the meantime, we gotta keep working and doing what we gotta do. So, we're getting real close now to something actually happening. So, that's why, you know, in my opinion, that's why we met tonight, was just to see, you know, if we wanna continue or.
Why can't those people come back together and involve CVCC? And go ahead and figure out the, the cans and cannots of CVCC, bring y'all a, a better plan. Make it s- as simple for you, cause you just get the plan give to you from those fire chiefs or whoever that was already working on it. Probably incorporate what Mark was already, and then they can bring it back to you. Say, here, here's the plan, here's what CBC can, can't do, what they will and won't pay for, whatever, and go from there. Does that sound like something that'd be feasible now?
Well, I mean, yeah, I hate to regurgitate this thing over and over again. I mean, you know, this, this committee or meeting was talked about over here and I have to, or if you just want to. I, I think it's time, but, you know, that's, that's what we've been saying since I'm down, Marty, I'm just, I'm good. I mean, you know, opposite little actions, we've talked all day, we've talked for thirty years. And Marty, I say what, kinda, that's what you said, you know?
The biggest thing is the people that are listening on the radio can't hear you. Because you're that far back, all you hear is a little, uh, 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 uh. You can't hear it real good because that mic's the only one that's working actively. Uh, I've been very passionate about funding, you know, uh, I, and I've talked to my board. I've talked to commissioners, I've talked to county manager. And, you know, I hope I've not said anything to upset you. But I'm gonna fight for my department, I'm gonna push for funding. You seen the same slide that I did at the cheese meeting in twenty-five years. You know, fire departments were increased by one cent. And that's, you know, that's pretty low. So, I wanna work with y'all and I hope we can continue in the future. And if there's anything I can do to help, I'm glad to help.
Just like you bring up that twenty-five-year desert.
Yeah.
Pretty much. We discussed that in that meeting. And like I said in that meeting, wasn't a commissioner.
Right.
Bottom line. That's, that's the history, that's the past.
Right.
You've got a board that is really supporting our fire departments.
Right.
So, um, just like I said a while ago, you know, and then when that stuff gets back to you, you're like, what do you do with that, you know?
Yeah. Well, again, I, I appreciate what, what you've done, you know? I, I'm glad you see there's a need and I'm glad that we're moving forward, you know? And I, I, like I said, I've been in the fire service thirty years here. And we lived a long time with, with no funding, you know, or little funding. And, you know, trying to pay part-time now and buy fire trucks, buy equipment, inflation, you know, it's, it gets tough. It gets really tough.
I agree.
And to try to manage all that, manage volunteers, make sure they're happy so they'll stay, you know? It's, it's, it's a tough job. I appreciate it.
I'd just like to add, I served on that committee when we met with the college. I think we talked to Jeff Peel and the biggest thing that stopped that committee is land, where to put it. And I think after that meeting, I think the discussion was of the fairgrounds and other options of land. Um, you know, whether we put it here, where we put it there, it's just like us in Bethlehem. We're wanting to build another station, uh, we're wanting to add a station. Uh, finding land where we want it is high and that's, that's our biggest problem. They ain't making no more land, you know, they make another fire truck every day. Might take two years to get one, but they're making another fire truck. Land is the issue. And sort of answer Eugene's question, only if anybody has, that committee stalled more on land than anything of where to put it. Um, it wasn't an issue for us to say, well, we want this, we want that, this is the building we want. Uh, I know like Mark's presentation had several options. Land is the number one thing that we was looking for and that's why that committee stalled.
Thank you.
I wear multiple different hats in the county, so I'm gonna be clear. I come to you tonight as training captain from Taylorsville Fire Department. Newton has a burn facility, much like what we're talking about at the fairgrounds. They've allowed us to use that. But for Taylorsville to use Newton facility, that means probably a Saturday, and we did this back in the summer. I get up at five AM, get a group of firefighters. We take one of our trucks out of service, go all the way to Newton. We do our burn or our training. Then we come back out of service because all the equipment on the truck's dirty. Then we have to get the truck back in service and we're talking ten, eleven o'clock that night. But we've been out of service and that truck's been out of service the whole time. As far as, I know you guys had said something about how much this facility would get used, would it get used? I promise you from Taylorsville's aspect, yes, sir, each one of you, it will get used. Rusty probably looks at his phone when I'm calling him, cause I'm calling him two or three times a week about training. Going, God, he's calling me again. I, I think this is a good thing, I think it's great. Location, I think it, it's the center of the county. CVCC is gonna be involved no matter where we put it. Yes, there might be some funding if it was on county-owned property. There might be some grant money no matter where it's at. But we need the facility and I appreciate you guys. Cause I've been on the fire service, in the fire service for, well, since nineteen eighty-two. I served with Commissioner Yoder on the fire department. We've never had anything in this county. Yeah, and as far as why the can's been kicked down the road for thirty years, I don't know. I know it was property, it was gonna be done on city land. That land was actually turned over to the fire association and it was a landfill and there's some questions and it was turned back over to the city and it's just, it's just never come to fruition. And I, I appreciate the fact that we're this close. And y'all are willing to stop kicking the can down the road and do something about it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I will say, I don't think it's a question if a facility will go here or not. I can only speak for myself, but. We just wanna make sure we get it right.
Yeah.
Bottom line. I don't think that's the question of. I don't think it's the question of, will there be one? I think that it's just, we gotta get it right to make as many as we can happy about it, and, uh, make sure it's fully utilized to its full potential. And, you know, we just, our county can't, can't not stand to have a, you know, six-digit mix-up, you know? That's just, that's just it, so, um, does anyone else have anything else they wanna say or talk? Come, come all the way up to the podium, please. I forgot that on the server.
Clear to everyone. Again, this is Rusty Graham, CBCC. We will provide an instructor no matter where you put the property, where you put this facility, we're not gonna, we're not gonna run away. My job is to guarantee that these people are trained safely, okay? I'm gonna make sure that the best equipment that I can get will be provided to them. So far, when they call me, I answer. Now, I have to apologize to Mark, honestly, I do apologize, there's twice a year that I am horrible to get, and that is in the month of December, when we're closing classes out in the month of January, so I do apologize for that. Um, I had to load a hundred and fifty students by accident that were missed. I was like, okay, I'll get back tomorrow, I, I know what that's about, it's trying to find an instructor to teach fire officer one. And I do apologize for that, sir, and that is on me, and if any, and now I think I sent everybody an email that has my personal cell phone number. That's my level of commitment, please don't give that out to every firefighter, there's three hundred of you, please don't do that, but we're gonna support you, okay? Period. And that was, I was given marching orders to make sure that you understood that we're here, okay? Will we prefer to have it here? Yes, okay? It goes back to funding. We're trying to make this campus have, uh, we want this center to be a full community college campus, which would get everything. Training, if it was done here, would generate the FTEs required to move this from a center to a campus. And it would give the students an Alexander County no matter what. And I'll go ahead and tell y'all a surprise, we're starting an emergency management academy, and it's not going to Catawba County, it's gonna be, it's gonna be housed in Alexander. We're gonna start moving more stuff here. I am passionate about this, that's why I was very careful when I spoke the first time, I was like, I'm gonna say something stupid. And everybody in the room's laughing, 'cause I do from time to time. I've been doing this for twenty years, okay? So I didn't quite get there in nineteen seventy-three, I went in nineteen eighty, okay? But I wanna make sure, my goal was to make sure when we do training, that every firefighter goes home. I wanna make sure that the training is the best possible training. When you build a burn building, like you're planning on doing, I have to make sure, that's the reason you want to partner with me, is to make sure there's a qualified life fire instructor in there, so that nothing happens. I make sure that we operate under OSFM's rules, to make sure there's a five-to-one instructor ratio. I make sure that if you're gonna rappel off that tower, it's the right person. Not just somebody that passed the test, but somebody that's actually done it once or twice. That's important. Our job is to make sure that when I get a call from Greg, no matter which hat he's wearing, because I also now I'm over the telecommunicator academy, that we provide what you want. CBC is your friend. Whether or not I can guarantee you a dime on either piece of property, I don't know. I'm, again, like I told you, I'm not Dr. Henshaw. What I am is I'm Dr. Graham, my job is to protect these guys, okay? And I joke around when I introduce myself, I, I have forty, I have forty state and federal certifications I maintain, and I'm not losing them, and I'm not gonna lose my freedom. The biggest thing that you're doing, when you build this, you're protecting these firefighters, okay? Mark brought three amazing options to us, okay? I want you to remember, every time you put something out there, it's gonna be three hundred firefighters running through it, correct? That's about how many firefighters we have in Alexander County, somewhere around there, I guess. Not only that, you're gonna have the opportunity now to reach into Iredale County and pull some of their people going, hey, there's something over here happening, because our community college is not doing it, you're gonna be able to actually pull people who are gonna be passionate, that might say, hey, listen, if they're not willing to re, they're not willing to evaluate my life at the level that they're willing to put a training center in, I think I'm gonna move to Alexander County. I'm gonna come volunteer at these fire departments, because for once, you're gonna be a have and not a have-not. We'll put what we have to in, I have an amazing staff, I have relationships, um, and we're not perfect, we make mistakes, and I will stand up in front of people and say, I'm sorry again, Mark, about the emails, and I will fix it. But I get six hundred emails at a time sometimes. I have around five hundred and fifty firefighters I answer to in Catawba County, and about three hundred here. If you want my advice on the equip, on the pieces of equipment, feel free to ask me. When you build something like a burn cell, and you're gonna do it for qualification, that burn cell has to have three capabilities for it to be for firefighter certification. I have to be able to climb up into the burn cell, sim- uh, simulating a climb from a first story to a second story fighting fire. I have to be able to also simulate it going into the basement, and I also have to be able to simulate at a direct attack. That's why we wanna be here, we wanna make sure that the actual burn cell that you put meets those qualifications, 'cause I would hate to have to say, listen, we've gotta go to Hickory to get this. That's all I'm saying. If you want my technical expertise, I have a staff that has it, but you have some amazing, uh, people in here right now. We've got, uh, Chief Fisher, who, who actually helped and actually designed the one that is at Hickory. So you have some homegrown talent. So that's all I have to say, we're here to support you no matter what.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Matt Scoggins, Deputy Chief, Sugarloaf Fire Department. Kinda roped into this last minute to, uh, come represent Sugarloaf, figured we needed to speak. Uh, we do, obviously, like everyone said, support the, uh, training grounds. Uh, one thing I have noticed from, you know, talk about the older guys in here, from the younger perspective, I've been doing it since two thousand and six. A lot has changed just in that short period. Uh, one thing we, at Sugarloaf, and I know others are fighting, is getting volunteers for sure. And my guys come to me and say, you know, I got this part-time job, full-time job also, I can't travel out of county to train. So this also opens up that to help, uh, our guys train in-house and in county, whether they will or not, I don't know. But it also brings in the wow factor, we'll have a training facility, that's gonna be awesome. So, we do support, obviously, that, we do wanna see CBCC in the process the whole way. As far as funding, you know, if they can do that, if it's on their facility, that's fun too, we just, uh, wanna see it done, so, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I've sat here tonight and hesitated to ask this, but I'm not gonna leave here without asking tonight. I know for a fact, we've had problems with response time in the county, on some fires and during the day. And regardless of the, what we do with the facility, we gotta make sure that we do the right thing, that if there's calls, that we have somebody to go and respond. And, and I don't know how to fix that, I don't claim to know how, but I know the problems there, and whatever it takes, we gotta fix it. I mean, it just can't keep happening. So, that's another issue that really bothers me. Uh, I, I think Matt made a good, good comment there, maybe this'll help recruit some people with having this here in the county. But we have got to fix that problem, and I understand, uh, it's getting to where it, there's, there's no such a thing as a volunteer anymore. The younger generation wants to be paid for everything they do, if they carry the trash to the roadside, I understand that. But we can't start out paying, uh, eighteen, twenty, thirty dollars a hour either. Uh, there's no way this budget in this county can handle that, and I don't know how to address it. But, but that's really been a burden on my heart for the last week or two.
I do agree with you, uh, Kent.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, and we're, we're funding at a higher level, and we're trusting the departments to make good judgment, how they spend their money, and, you know, hopefully to hire people, and, you know, I don't wanna see, uh, you know, a call unanswered. Uh, you know, that's something that, you know, I really have no, uh, tolerance for. But, you know, I know there is times when maybe nobody's there, maybe everybody's busy, you know? But, but still, you know, we want to fund at a level we can afford to fund, and I think if you go back and look, you know, we're, we're taking it up pretty good from where it has been. And, uh, we have a, a good staff, I think, in our fire marshal, and emergency management, and all those there that are trained and know about these things, so. You know, I want us to get something that we can make it work, so we're as close as we've ever been, so.
Yes, please.
On finances-wise, um, late twenty eighteen, I became chief of Vashita Fire Department. As, as you read, we brought in sixty-three thousand dollars in tax money. We barely could keep the lights on when I became fire chief. Um, we do run a smaller call volume, none less important to me are the people that live in Vashita Fire District. Uh, but as far as when I became chief, I did never have a conversation with a commissioner, or that wasn't opened up until later. Um, I thought that was something that was strange when I first became chief, and y'all have done an excellent job of, of speaking with us. And, uh, I think it's a great thing for our county to move in forward, to, to be that way, to, to speak with each other and to see each other. Uh, the money that we get, we use for staffing, that, that y'all allot for us out of the county budget. I can tell you, in January, we run two structured fires in our district, and just in our response district, work and structured fires. Those people are living in those homes today because of quick response and staffing in our fire department. They were both during the day, a short time, when, when not many people are around during regular business hours, most of our people are traveling out to work. Uh, but that guy being at the fire department made a big difference for us. And like I said, not many times you'll respond to a structure fire where the people will get to live there. Uh, both of them spent the night there that night, uh, at both structures. Um, so I thank you for the funding from Vashita Fire Department, I thank you for the consideration, and I thank you for, for talking with us and being part of helping us move our community forward. And speaking on, um, districts, I think we're the second biggest district, if not third, in the county. We are, hopefully with funding coming up, reaching toward being able to build a second station, that's the goal of mine, that's the goal of Mark's, that's the goal of our board, is to have another station, uh, funding has always been our issue with that. Um, but it is in our mind, and I want you to know that it's a goal of mine, to have anybody that's outside of our five miles covered. Uh, but as funding raises, those opportunities open. Our biggest plea right now is for land, just like Bethlehem, we, we have a hard time actually purchasing or finding a piece of land to build a second station. But, uh, as fine X's Y's, I appreciate it, we thank you for it, it has helped us tremendously. The paid guy helps a big, I work in the district, I always respond if I'm able to, but it's nice for me not to have to leave from what I'm doing to run a medical call, or it was a, he was a huge help to me, and I appreciate it, 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 it helped my, uh, end of the day all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think moving forward, what we need to do is have some commissioners meet with the CBCC people and, uh, get this process started and see what goes on there and, and, uh, move forward.
I am actually talking to a board member at CBCC tomorrow in regards to this, just to start that line of communication. And then, uh, that would probably reach, I would think, Dr. Henshaw immediately thereafter. I guess this is the part, is all hearts clear?
Marty, I got one thing.
Okay, Charlie.
No, this, this is not, not a big thing, I mean, I just want to, uh-
You know, at Taylorsville, we are funded by the town and by the county. Well, the, the town, what we really need is just maybe y'all can get together, the, the, uh, town board wants to get together with y'all and sat down, uh, which I want, I want to, uh, tell y'all that, uh, in funding calls, uh, with the number of calls, it's pretty well equal. In January, we run forty-six calls in town, we run thirty-seven out, and seven mutually, which is about half and half. Well, being the board president, we get into this, it's kinda like a ping-pong game, you know? And, and y'all have really been good, the new commissioners, but used to, it was the town, what's the county gonna do? County, what's the town gonna do? Fire marshal, what's the county gonna do? What, or what town's gonna do? It's, it's back and forth. But, uh, we went to the town yesterday, and we laid it all out, pretty much the same thing we told y'all. And, uh, if we can get together, you know, like I say, my ship sailed. I've really not got a dog in this fight, other than just won't do good for the county, do good for my fellow firefighters and, you know, the people of the county, because, you know, I'm about done. Me and Larry's getting on that downhill track. But, uh, and I hope anything I said didn't offend y'all, 'cause I, I am on board, y'all have done a great job, and I, and I didn't want to. When I give you figures and stuff like that, it's just a comparison of how it is in other places. And hopefully down the road, it can be more like that here. But I will say, I've talked to several of the commissioners on this board here, back when we had the problem with the, the old ladder truck. It was gonna be astronomical to fix, well, the commissioners, several of them on this board here, Marty, and talked to Ronnie, and I may have said something to Larry too, uh, they were really on board, you know, if there's anything we could do, and luckily, we were able to work it out. But, uh, hopefully, maybe the county commissioners and the town board can, uh, get it worked out. That way, it'd be kinda equal, both sides, but I just wanted to mention that. Thank y'all.
I will tell you this, the, um, uh, I am supposed to meet with the, uh, chairman of town council in the next few days, and that will probably be discussed.
Okay, well, I, I, we do appreciate it, 'cause it, it cuts, puts us in kind of a position, you know, it's back and forth, you know? And everybody, you know, what's that one going to be?
I understand how that goes. By the way, you said you started in seventy-three?
Yeah.
Don't go there.
I was born in seventy-four. So, uh, I do, I do, uh, appreciate everyone's attendance here tonight. I do appreciate, uh, the older generations' wisdom and knowledge they possess, and are, are sharing, the older generation.
Just remember, we got you here, just keep paying your social security, that's all.
No, I'm very appreciative to, uh, elders and respect them greatly, uh, they've been places, and, uh, they have a lot to offer, and to, um, I mean, we need to soak it up, so, uh, appreciate your length of time serving. Um, any commissioner have anything? All right, we will be adjourning the meeting to go into closed session, and, um, we would be only re-adjourning to leave, to adjourn. Thank you, guys.